To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please note that this meeting is being electronically recorded. And gathered tonight to have discussed what is a relatively brief agenda. This was not a scheduled meeting and I appreciate the members of the administration and the members of the school committee. Who have been able to be here so we can discuss these issues. For the initial discussion, I would ask Mr. Furtado and Ms. DeAngelis if you could join the school committee because we have, as I said, we have three agenda items tonight. The first is an overview of our budgetary priorities for FY 2016. This second is an issue that, as I was saying to some folks earlier, is frankly overdue to the degree we've spent a lot of time over the course of the past year and a half talking about communication and how we prioritize communication. How we make our methods of communication more effective. And in light of some events in the course of the past week, Mr. Withers, the policy chair, and myself thought it would be incumbent upon this committee to consider ways in which we might be able to revamp our communication processes such that we can, as a district, communicate more effectively. And frankly, advocate for our district priorities more effectively and coherently. And then also discussion of the potential implementation of legal and protective services as a career and technology education program at Attleboro High School. So before we dive into those budgetary priorities, and again, for background, although I suspect most people have taken the time to view the meeting and are aware of the context to some degree. The school committee and the administration, over the course of several years, have discussed primarily, actually more or less exclusively, at the subcommittee level and seldomly. The possibility of bringing a legal and protective services program to the CTE department at Attleboro High School. That discussion did not advance in a substantive way past the subcommittee stage, nor did advance particularly thoroughly through the budgetary process because, as we've spoken about continually over the course of the past year, we are in the midst of a significant financial challenges. And those are structural issues, those are systemic issues, those are issues that we have said, I think, in a pretty uniform way over the course of the past year. That while we do not believe at the local level there is the capacity to address the structural financial problems that are plaguing the Attleboro schools, we do believe that some of these issues can be mitigated. And that can be done through thoughtful planning, through prioritization on both the district's part and on the municipality's part, and certainly working together in a cooperative manner. So those are sort of some of the background issues. After our last regularly scheduled school committee meeting on August 17th, the superintendent informed myself and Ms. Singer that the mayor had intended to send to the municipal council a communication asking essentially for a special appropriation, which would be airmarked for use in the Attleboro Public Schools to bring about the legal and protective services program. We will talk specifically about legal and protective services, the value that can add to the district, the benefits that that can yield to our students later on this evening. But that, when the superintendent met with myself and Ms. Singer at about 10:00 PM on Monday night last week, that was the first, we had been informed that there was the potential for this request going to the municipal council. Again, important to remember that the school committee's request of $72 million that went to the mayor and ultimately to the municipal council was not fulfilled in its entirety. There was no expectation that it would be fulfilled in its entirety. But the conversation that was taking place over the course of the budget process and continued frankly through the summer, my presentation to the municipal council on July 23rd, and the presentation by the Massachusetts Budget and Policy Center at our meeting on August 17th. Was that it was our belief that we needed to do everything we can to mitigate the situation that we're facing. And again, the way to do that is to prioritize appropriately, to advocate effectively, and hopefully partner with every entity willing to partner with us to try to bring about good results for our students. So, at the time when the superintendent informed myself and Ms. Singer, the chair of the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee, that this request would be going down from the mayor to the municipal council. We did, both Ms. Singer and myself, express some reservations about the idea of an airmarked appropriation, and for reasons that I'll speak about in a few seconds. That's a concern because Massachusetts law is frankly extremely clear that appropriating authorities are not airmark funds for educational purposes. That the point of having the autonomous, independently elected governing body of the school system is to make sure that money is prioritized appropriately according to student needs, rather than having special airmarked appropriations designated by external entities. That being said, the merits of the legal and protective services program and the reasoning behind the mayor's decision to send that communication to the council aren't ones that I think there's been frankly any sort of criticisms of. I think the communication that was made by the mayor and the information provided by the Chief Hegney and Chief LeChance, I think to some degree sort of speak for themselves that this is something that could benefit not only our students but our community at large. These are sustainable career paths, these are areas that our community and surrounding communities frankly need more qualified applicants. It's a good career, it's something that students are interested in as students and can make a good living in as professionals. So, again, for all those reasons and many more that our educators will speak to momentarily, this is a program that enjoys robust support. However, it was not a program that was at the top of the priority list given the severe financial difficulties that the district is facing, which again, we will talk about in just a moment. So, I have up on the board that I think it's worth noting, those two statutes, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 34, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B. And while, you know, the short version is what they say is it's supposed to be in terms of autonomy as to how the district spends its money on its educational priorities. That autonomy is important, it speaks to the heart of public education. We'll go now to this district in recent history and history that extends frankly beyond recent history, have identified our priorities and our spending priorities in different ways. We have on occasion had our priorities dictated by one individual or a small group. We have lurched from one crisis to another. Of late, we have attempted to deliberate and to use a thorough process to analyze comprehensively the context in which our challenges are being faced. We've tried to involve diverse stakeholders that culminate in a strategic plan that articulate the national goals and objectives. This is, you can guess which one we tend to lean toward amongst those five. Other options that some districts elsewhere may choose, we may pick out of a hat for our financial priorities, or we could resort to political influences. Again, I think one stands out amongst those five. The distinction that's extremely important to make, and certainly, committee members are welcome to comment or ask questions about this, but there are two documents that are issued by the Attleboro Public Schools every year. Because I think to some degree this issue, sometimes it can get a little lost in the weeds and we can think that this, the only reason that this sort of brakes were put on this momentarily was the school committee was just sort of had our feathers ruffled that we weren't asked for permission. In fact, we are not asked for permission about specific academic programs. We purposely do not vote on the program of studies that lists the options for students to take different courses. Those are decisions that are made by our educational professionals, by the experts who determine what students will need now and in the future to continue their education and enjoy sustainable careers. The Student Handbook, on the other hand, which is a book of policies, the rules that govern the district, those are in fact voted on by the school committee. That is part of our statutory authority to oversee the school system, that's what makes us a governing body. But what makes us a responsible governing body is that we defer to those who have devoted their lives, their professional lives and their careers, to making these types of decisions. That's where the Program of Studies comes from. It is important that the school committee be kept informed of the Program of Studies. And occasionally, certainly, there are conversations that take place between the school committee and the administration about certain values judgments, the community's priorities. For instance, part of the strategic plan is a thorough discussion about the elective continuum that's available in the Attleboro Public Schools to make sure that this is something that resonates with the community and that students are engaged in. But it's important to understand that we draw that line because the political and civilian overseers of the school system do not choose what type of science students need to take in order to solve medical problems in the future. Which is again, a hypothetical example, but that distinction between the handbook and the Program of Studies is important for this conversation. Frankly, the only thing that would be sort of more outlandish than a school committee dictating what's in the Program of Studies are some other political entities dictating what's in the Program of Studies, which again, I don't think was the intention with regard to how this process played out. But that's why it was of such concern. Okay, we will now move to our budgetary priorities. Again, this is a lot of context, but this is an important issue. And it's an important moment for the school committee and for this district to make sure that we don't end up in this situation again. So I will now ask Mr. Furtado if you could walk through this slide to talk a little bit about the prolonged budget process that we went through and how we've landed where we are tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the first bar indicates where our budget was for FY 15. The second bar shows what's called a level service budget, which would be our level of FY 15 services and personnel with the associated contractual increases required for 16. Which would raise our budgetary needs by $2.4 million. There were a series of other requests, priorities expressed by the school administration to the school committee in conjunction with some of the priorities expressed by the school committee itself. In the next bar, that rose the budgetary request to $72.4 million. Those were after an initial culling of requests at the school level by the school administration. So the ultimate superintendent's recommended budget to the school committee with all of the programmatic personnel requirements included was $72.4 million. And then the actual municipal allocation was $68.92.
Thank you, Mr. Furtado. So now, the next several slides, including Special Education, which the original number was $645,000. And you can see based on our color coding system there, the priorities that were able to be fulfilled and those who weren't. The district level, which is apparently next, $544,000, not a lot of red in that one, incidentally. The high school request, which was $545,000, somewhere in there I believe is legal and protective services. Please tell me it's on this one.
On the bottom.
Thank you. All right. Middle school, about $852,000. Is there any red on that?
No, sir.
Thank you. Elementary schools, again, Mr. Furtado, I know you like to articulate the basis for the lunchroom aids.
We had a contractual obligation to provide.
Mr. Furtado, we've worked on this multiple times during the budget process.
Yes, sir, to optimize teaching and learning experience of our students.
Because by having lunch monitors, we're able to configure the schedules in a way where teachers have an appropriate amount of prep time, which is able to improve their instruction.
Yes, sir.
There you go. Thank you. All right. Now, that's by the way, that's part of why we do the budget process when we do and keep the conversation going because we want to make sure that we stay fresh and we all know our educational priorities and that way there are no surprises. So now we'll go, again, we cannot, our budget process and our challenges and the structural issues that we face as a district are extraordinarily complex. And we can't just limit them to just, these are our top five problems, these are our top 10 challenges. They're all interrelated. There's a series of domino effects that go into place when we prioritize something or we fund something. And a lot of these are obviously moving targets that change throughout the course of the year. But one issue that has been a problem and has been a challenge is being exacerbated by, as we've said over virtually every meeting for the past several months. The fact that we are for the second consecutive academic year, beginning the school year, with a double-digit reduction in personnel. That there were nine layoffs at the end of the year, even when those individuals are called back, as they occasionally are, frequently are even. Given the total loss of personnel, it stems from resignations, from non-renewals, from retirements. And ultimately, the point is that the sum total, the number of people we have to put in front of students or to work with students is fewer now than it was in the 14-15 academic year. And then the 14-15 academic year, it was fewer than the 13-14 academic year. And frankly, we weren't particularly staffed to the level that we would like to be at that time. This is why we say this is a growing problem, this is a systemic problem, this is a problem that we need, the community needs to know about. It's why people should not be surprised when the school committee speaks publicly about this issue and tries to keep the spotlight on this issue because it's something that, as a community, we need to address. We have an obligation to our students to try to address it. And one way we address it is when we have the opportunity to hire classroom teachers, we do so in a way to try to bring down class sizes as best we can. Now, tonight, we will be considering voting to send a request to the mayor, as I communicated publicly into the school committee over the weekend. This does stem from a conversation that I did have with the mayor and on behalf of the school committee, I extended to the mayor our gratitude for his willingness to engage in that conversation. And to join with us in prioritizing this in a way that hopefully keeps class sizes as close to the numbers as we'd like them to be, as we possibly can. So I would ask Ms. DeAngelis if you could speak to the, either of these two slides, which again, is ideal if the documentation can be provided beforehand. But if you could speak to where we're seeing these issues and where our greatest challenges are. And it looks like we've got some bullet points here and then we've got a nice chart here that I think would be a good starting place.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After registration in the last couple of weeks, as you can see highlighted in red, are the areas where we're really at class cap. So I've talked previously about seventh grade being at capacity. And it's, you can see that across seventh grade at all schools, that some schools are actually over at this point at Coello. In, Coello's sixth grade is also full, as well as eighth grade. So, right now their enrollment is 691. Their sixth grade enrollment has grown some as well this year. So I'm particularly concerned, as I've articulated before, about seventh grade. We do have two sixth grades that are, one almost full at Wamsata, Coello is full, but Brennan does have some slots. So we would have to transfer students to Brennan if we had kids register at Coello, and we have begun that process to get transportation in place for those students. And obviously, Wamsata's, fifth grade is building as well. I think we have two slots left there. So that's kind of a recap of the middle school. In terms of the elementary school, I'm particularly concerned about Hill Roberts. There are 91 students now. There were 88 with three classes, now have three students on a waiting list to Hill Roberts to determine if they're going to go to Hill Roberts, or we have to send them to other schools. Obviously, that's a huge concern because if those three students went to Hill Roberts, then we're at 30 for class size. Hyman Fine has three classes of first graders, so 27 is a very high number for first grade, so that's particularly concerning as well. Curriculum-wise in first grade, that's a significant early literacy time, being a 10-year elementary principal veteran, I believe, that I would never want 27 kids in a first grade class, especially, that's the biggest reading jump. We expect kids to make gains significantly, about seven reading levels in first grade. So, to have more teacher frequent contact, I think, is important in first grade.
So, I'll just stop you there momentarily. So, I think that that's a good articulation in terms of, as we try to identify, because I think while we don't accept earmarks, we do have responsibility to articulate, particularly when we're seeking any degree of funding. Whether that's the initial budget in the spring or whether that's sort of ad hoc challenges as they present themselves. I appreciate the comments as to why the elementary schools need to be prioritized. If you could just sort of reiterate, from a structural standpoint, the challenge in putting additional teachers at the middle school level based on how the middle schools are structured.
I think the challenge with the middle school, as you know, they're built on teams, so we either have two teacher teams or four teacher teams. So if you look at a seventh grade, if you were going to build a new team, you would need four new teachers, four classrooms, we have to consider space availability. So I think that would be significantly challenging, even if we added a two-person team. I think that would be equally difficult because then we have to look at certification of teachers and so forth to teach.
But I think the important point here is that this is the distinction between providing a remedy for the structural financial problem that we have, which would cost a significant amount of money. And mitigating the problem we have, which can be done at times by, you know, addressing other specific problems. And going through that process and talking about what the priorities are and how they develop and how they fit into the broader context of the challenges that the district is facing. That's how budgetary priorities need to be developed, identified, and articulated. And I, so I thank you for that comparison that you're able to offer there between the elementary school and the middle school needs. Are there questions or comments from either the committee? Okay. Ms. DeAngelis, any other points related to the class size issue?
No, I think we have other class size, I mean, 25, five-year-olds in a kindergarten is a lot with no support, paraprofessionals for teachers. We have classes, you know, Studley and Willett are full right now. And then if you look at Thatcher, their third and fourth grade are full. However, there are some students that receive the bulk of their education outside of those third and fourth classrooms. But we have to leave spots for inclusion for them to be able to participate. So we always do that in hopes that kids have opportunities for inclusion. So I would not say that number is 28 consistently every single day.
Which is, and also, that's a good point, and in addition to that, there are some numbers up there that are not as, you know, bad, nearly as bad as they could be. We've got some grade levels in some buildings that, you're a little closer to the screen, so feel free to point them out. But it's important to note that Attleboro is not a district where every single classroom is teeming with students. We've got, we have pockets of areas of significant concern that we have a responsibility to address. And we've got some areas that are quite favorable in terms of our students' teacher ratio. Is that a fair characterization?
Yes, and then we have some teachers, like if you look at Willett and you see 28, we also have teachers at that grade level where there are some co-teaching opportunities. So there's a second teacher to provide support in those classrooms. So that's why I targeted the other areas because of the known facts underneath of what services are available at this school.
Right. Thank you. Mrs. Stars.
I know with the open classroom concepts at Hyman Fine and Hill Roberts, depending on the classes, things can be changed around to make more room, especially at the third grade and fourth grade as the children are becoming larger in size. You can't do that at the other schools. So would you say, what are average third and fourth grade classrooms? So I'm seeing some with 28s. How many is that room, are those rooms truly made for?
You know, I would say that we have room for 28. I don't think it's the first time that we've had 28 in third and fourth grade at those schools. And I think that principals have more concerns about lower grade levels than higher class size, but I think space-wise, we're okay.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Withers.
And just something that you touched on a little bit, I think Chairman Murphy, and my reaction to this conversation about the class size. I think it's, in Ms. DeAngelis's explanation, it's a perfect example of why these funding decisions need to be made by the administration in discussions with the school committee that's elected to make these decisions. Because, you know, you can look at this and say- Because, you know, you can look at this and say, twenty-eight at Willett and twenty-seven at Hyman Fine, well, Willett needs another teacher. Or you could say, well, middle school needs another teacher without knowing the reality of the situation and what needs to be done. And I think it's just, this is a perfect example of why the school department is different than other municipal departments and why, you know, these decisions need to be made by the people who are charged with that, either in their, in their job and in their training through the years, or who are elected to oversee it.
And I think it's a good point. And I think it's the expertise that we rely on the administrators for. I think it's the deliberative nature of the discussions that take place. I think it's the transparency of the public discussions where we can essentially say, listen, number one, the, those who frankly have, want to go around and claim publicly that every classroom has thirty students in it, that's not accurate. The public should know that. It's frankly not even close to accurate. But those who think we don't have a major systemic problem that we have an obligation to address, that's not accurate either. So as is often the case in life, and certainly in public policy, the answer is a more nuanced one, and I think it's important to add that conversation. Were there other, any other points from the administration related to this sort of, the sort of mapping of the issue? Then we'll go now to the salary breakdown that Mr. Fattato was kind enough to articulate in keeping in mind that these are estimates. Mr. Fattato, if you want to walk us through that.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. For a, for a new teacher hire, the beginning of the salary scale is at about forty thousand dollars. A health insurance plan for a family would be sixteen, seven, dental, seven hundred, and med tax, a thousand. So we're in the neighborhood of sixty thousand dollars per new teacher hire, give or take, depending on if they have experience, we're obligated by contract to put them on the appropriate step to increase that salary base. So if we are going to be making a request to the municipal council for additional funding, it would be, for two teachers, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars would be this kind of starting point. And then depending on experience, we could go up from there.
And again, the, the two teachers were not just a number that was picked out of a hat. I mean, these are the numbers that, based on our best estimates, with regard to where we are right now with registrations, this is, what we've given the limitation with regard to the middle school investment that Ms. DeAngelis spoke about earlier, this is our most prudent path toward trying to lower the average size to twenty-eight across the district. So that's the rationale behind, behind the two teacher request. I think we do have a due diligence responsibility to ask Mr. Fattato whether the district currently has, within our operating budget, the capacity to withstand this if we weren't to have an additional appropriation.
That would be a significant challenge at this point.
I think given the dire circumstances, we would, that would even be an understatement, correct, Mr. Fattato?
Correct.
Now is not the time to undersell. But again, I appreciate Mr. Fattato's attempts at joining in the ranks of municipal diplomacy, but the reality is, we do not have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
We do not.
And we will not have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. There's another interesting conversation, which again, we've had throughout different points throughout the fiscal year that I think is important, an important conversation to have publicly. It's about the idea of where the school department finishes. Mr. Fattato, in the past, has used the expression, "A nice soft landing." That does not mean coming in at zero. I think when we charge Mr. Fattato and the other administrators with managing a sixty-eight million dollar budget, perhaps more, hopefully eventually more, the idea that somehow you can come in to the penny, to me, I think, given the, how significant the problem is, if you miss the landing, the landing strip, you know, the reality is, there needs to be some flexibility there. I'm trying to avoid the use of the word cushion, but the idea that the district, in this instance, we finished the fiscal year with approximately three hundred thousand, a little more than that, unexpended funds, that was the result of major belt tightening, drastic spending freezes, and a little bit of luck, frankly. Is that a fair characterization?
Well, when we realized we were going to struggle this year, we certainly wanted to inform the city. When we did that, the city certainly made it clear to us that an option of coming in over budget was not available to us.
Mm-hmm.
So we had to be especially prudent to avoid that consequence. And I know the number sounds big, but when you, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a sixty-eight million dollar budget is less than one-half of one percent.
Correct. Which is again, why you need to leave some room on the runway. It is not a failure on the part of the administration when there's that amount of flexibility at the end of the year. And also, I would also point out that while there's a longstanding practice and a protocol in place in Attleboro and districts across the Commonwealth of the municipality returning those unexpended funds to the district. The reason for that is, one, and again, this is not specific to Attleboro, but it's across Massachusetts, it incentivizes the prudent use of, of public funds. If the district thought that we were faced with the prospect of not receiving those funds back, there would be an inherent incentive for our district and many others to essentially burn the cash when it became clear that there was going to be some type of cushion. That, that can't happen. We have a responsibility to taxpayers to make sure that that doesn't happen. But part of the way we, from an institutional standpoint, incentivize that is by making sure that those funds are returned and then invested in the district in the variety of one-time expenses that occur every year. And that's an important practice that must continue. And that frankly, you know, that was part of the conversation that I had with the mayor, was making sure that this investment is a recognition of the challenges we're facing and not something where there's some type of trade-off. And I think, I think that's again, an important part of that conversation. And also, just because I think this is part and parcel, and Mr. Storrs earlier made a comment related to this, the reoccurring nature of staffing needs, and I think that's one question that, it's certainly a fair question when people hear about appropriations that come later in the budget process than normal, then the question is, well, is this a recurring expense? Is this a sustainable investment? I think the point that the school committee would make is that our classroom size challenges, our class size challenges are in and of themselves reoccurring, that this is a problem we are facing every single year. And so this is, is it a one-time expense? No, it's not. It's part of why we've been beating this drum continuously for as long as we have, that as a community, we need to find a way to address these issues. It is not fair to have as many students in a class as we have in certain grade levels. With regard to the district's reputation, something that we have a responsibility to safeguard at all times, we do not have problems all over the map. We've got some class sizes that are quite favorable, but we've got places that we have a responsibility to address. And again, I, on behalf of the school committee, extend my gratitude to the mayor for his commitment to help us to do that. So now we'll go to the specific advice offered by our administrators with regard to this investment. And it seems as though the priorities that have been identified, should we be fortunate enough to receive this appropriation, is at Hill Roberts and Hyman Fine. Would anyone like to speak to that, or have we sort of covered that ground?
I think we've covered it.
I think so too.
Again, you know, that's where we would recommend it.
That's where we need it. Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the school committee before we? So I would like to entertain a motion to send to the mayor the request consistent with the conversation that we had tonight and that I was fortunate enough to have within this weekend regarding the appropriation for two additional classroom teachers, according to the specifications provided by the administration, and to be used at Hyman Fine and Hill Roberts. So move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Are we, are we putting a dollar amount on it, or are we, is the request going to indicate the possible moving target?
Yeah, I think the request would be the estimated appropriation. The reality is, if, if the appropriation is in the vicinity of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, while Mr. Fattato's underselling notwithstanding earlier, while we know we do not have the hundred and twenty thousand dollar latitude, certainly if this is a matter of five or ten thousand dollars, something, by the way, I explicitly stated when I presented a month ago, that on a sixty-eight million dollar budget, while there are some numbers that you just can't reach and priorities you can't address, if it's a five thousand dollar issue, depending on where it falls in the overall priorities, that is something we have flexibility to address. And I think, provided that, you know, the, it's within that range, I think that we're comfortable knowing that we'll be able to achieve the objective. Mr. Storrs?
Earlier, we were talking about the inappropriate situation with earmarked allocations. And, you know, obviously, this is what we want to do with this fund. I, you know, I believe that's the census here. But I guess what I'm indicating is that the letter that we do send up, I don't know how we can indicate it, but in such a way where it's not...
Well, we can earmark it.
There you go.
First of all, we can earmark, we can earmark things. We shouldn't any more so than is, you know, responsible, to a responsible extent. But the, the point is that while we, too, are civilian overseers, we are closer, we work, you know, hand-in-hand with the, with the educators, which is why Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-four provides the school committee with that authority to transfer funds and to identify certain budgetary priorities. So in this instance, this is a matter frankly of transparency on our part, to say to the mayor and to ultimately to the municipal council, this is not a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a player to be named, this is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for something that we will be happy to, and we have provided a robust justification and rationale behind. Mr. Larson?
I think to Mr. Storrs' point, I think the other part of this is, you know, we are now receiving a recommendation from the professionals that we hired to help manage the district for us. They've identified these two situations, and so I don't really think of it as an earmark. I mean, I think of it more of, you know, we're picking up their request as they've identified the issues to us, and so we're acting on their, their recommendations. So I mean, I...
I just want to make sure that when they do the allocation on their side, it doesn't come off as an earmark. I mean, as, as the indication of this conversation, we know how we're going to use that funding if it is approved.
Yeah. And again, it still needs to be approved. While we extend our gratitude to the mayor for his willingness to, to support the request, certainly the municipal council has a responsibility to, to scrutinize the request and to ask any questions. And I know that certainly, as the spokesperson of the school committee, I am ready, willing, and able to communicate that rationale. And I know, I'm sure all of you would be happy to spend some time with our friends there as well. So any other questions or comments related to the motion that's on the floor? All in favor?
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. And I will be communicating that to the mayor in due time, probably tomorrow. Okay, so now, as we said, we find, we find ourselves in this situation because of a, essentially amounted to, and I, I'll leave it to the superintendent to characterize how he sees fit, but essentially, these were conversations that, that came about from perfectly appropriate and prudent conversations that took place between the school officials and municipal officials some time ago. There, the mayor did communicate to the superintendent, my understanding is, very recently, that this was something that was a priority of his administration, is something that he wanted to advocate for. Culminated, I guess it's culminating right now, but it, it continued with Mr. Rooney's presentation to the municipal council last week on Tuesday evening, which was subsequent to Mr. Sheehan's communication to myself and Ms. Singer that the mayor would be sending a communication to the municipal council related to this. I think we've sort of addressed the sort of legal and procedural issues. And incidentally, I should note that I did confer with the school committee's legal counsel with regard to the positions that were taken related to the statutory provisions. And there were no surprises for those who have read Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-four. But aside from the sort of legal and procedural issues, we find ourselves in a situation where we had a principal who was communicating to the municipal council about a funding priority that had not been fully vetted by the school committee. It was not endorsed as part of our budgetary request. Again, it was, I think, done with good intentions because this is an important program. It's one that I think enjoys widespread support throughout the administration and on the school committee. But the process by which it came, was given that public forum and brought before the municipal council, was inconsistent with our practices. And so that's what we're looking to address in a constructive fashion, to get to a point where the school district advocates in an organized, coherent fashion, and particularly when we're communicating to the appropriating authorities of the city, we need to make sure that we are essentially all on the same page. Mr. Sheehan, I don't know if there's anything you want to add related to that, or...
Mr. Murphy, I just need to take the moment to express my sincere apology to this committee for having to be here tonight, and especially to you as the chair. I know the angst by which your week was disrupted yourself personally.
I don't have any angst. I'm angst, I'm like, that's not me. I don't, I never have any angst.
And the, and the time needed over the weekend by which you dedicated and had conversations and so forth. The bottom line is that if, in conversations that we had over the course of the week with my administrative team, et cetera, if, being given the same opportunity again or the same set of circumstances, would I, as superintendent, do things differently? I absolutely would have. It's not as if the mayor did wrong by going to the superintendent of schools about a programmatic piece or questioning or whatever, and there were short timelines associated with what his timelines were, et cetera, and we had discussed this program for a year and a half or whatever. That's not it. I really need to say to the mayor at that time, although I agree with these things and although it was on our list at some time, it wasn't the number one priority in the district. It does help kids, we've all agreed to those pieces, and we're not saying it didn't. The point is that I need to advise the mayor at the time that the school committee has to be involved because I can't allow the mayor to violate Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-four. And to have a meeting on an emergency basis, whether it was on that Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or Monday, by which he could be here and discuss ways by which we could do this and not violate the regulation, that was my responsibility to remind him of those things. I did not do that. I seized the moment by which we tried to get this program in. And certainly, I know the way that Mr. Murphy handled this, he did it very, very well. He represented the committee and the city very, very well. I think we're all on the same page about the need of the program. This district does have priorities, and they far exceed that program. It does help our kids, but our other things have a lot of priorities as well. So I was glad that the mayor and Chairman Murphy met on Saturday and came to agreement on some particular things. But I had to do things differently as well. And so I think that is part of a learning curve and making sure that those pieces. The point of, as far as Mr. Rooney presenting and so forth, I had already had an understanding with, with the mayor that the mayor was presenting the material. And so I will make certain, and I read what Mr. Murphy said, and as put in writing, I will make certain that that type of thing never takes place again either with regard to the administration. Those things have to go through the superintendent of schools. The school committee needs to be aware of those particular things. And who is going to be doing the presentations? And as I shared with Mr. Murphy, I would have asked Mr. Murphy to have a representative there as well if we were going to present to the city council, so...
And, you know, and Mr. Sheehan, I do appreciate that because, you know, I think it's important to note that, you know, regardless of whether individual decisions are made, I mean, part of our issue here is we have an environment in which it was, you know, the mistake was, it wasn't prevented. But beyond that, I want to clarify, and I appreciate the, all of Mr. Sheehan's comments and the importance of involving the school committee in the communication, but this is not an issue of the school committee choosing what courses are offered at Attleboro High School or any other building. Frankly, we don't want to be involved in that. Now, in this instance, given the major breakdown in process and communication, what became very evident to me as I began fielding phone calls throughout the course of last week, is that this school committee was going to make an exception, and we very much were prepared to make a decision related to what would not be offered. However, I think that, given the totality of the circumstances right now, I think this is, we've, I hope, been able to sort of see some silver linings in terms of this issue and maybe make a step forward in terms of improving our processes, both in terms of governmental relations and communications with the community at large, hopefully in a way, because again, we, you know, we have lived in a world for a long time where we lurch from one priority to another depending on the day of the week. And I think one of the things that we have stressed over the course of the past several months, and frankly, it really is leading up to the adoption of the comprehensive strategic plan, which I hope will occur next month, is the idea that we have a consensus-based set of priorities that certainly are, you know, you know, different things will move to the top of the list at different times based on, on, on needs, but there's, there are overarching goals that we're trying to collectively achieve. And I think that that is a very different type of environment for these schools to operate under than we have in the past. And I think, again, I think this is a good moment to sort of be able to draw that distinction between what it's like to lurch from one priority to another and what it's like to address priorities more holistically and in a comprehensive fashion. Are there questions or comments related to this? Mr. Withers, I know as the policy chair... Mr. Withers, I know as the policy chair that, if you want to talk a little bit about the idea of trying to streamline this into, and articulate this through a policy provision.
Yeah. So, you know, this is something that's been discussed, the specific communications between building administration and municipal or state government representatives a little bit at the policy level, not, not extensively. What we have discussed extensively, I think, is communication in general, and be that between the administration and the committee, administration and the public, administration and the municipal government, and the importance of, importance of that communication being accurate, being timely, and being accurate and being timely and being consistent. And like I said, you know, this specific issue was kind of an offshoot of that, of something that we, we would need to address at some point. I think this last, this last week is a perfect example of why this sort of policy is needed to ensure that we have unified messaging from the administrat-, from the school district. You know, I think there's still, at least from my perspective, and I suspect I'm not alone, a lot of confusion as to what exactly happened, who was involved at what point, who said, you know, who, who said what. And that's, that's problematic to me, and I think it's prob-, you know, it's, it's problematic for the district. We shouldn't have that communicate, that confusion. The idea behind the proposed policy is that the district speaks with one voice. You know, the, the head of the district is a superintendent, with the school committee as the autonomous body to the side. The superintendent can certainly delegate as, as he sees fit if there's a, if there's someone he thinks can speak better to an issue. For instance, as an educational issue, perhaps assistant superintendent or a financial issue, Mr. Fratato or the, or the comptroller, whoever that may be. But it should be coming from the superintendent. So what this pol-, what this policy really does is puts that in writing, is that, you know, there's a desire for orderly and unified messaging on behalf of the schools, and the superintendent is charged with this enforcement. So what it, what it ultimately says, and you have it in front of you, the last clause is that official communications by building administrators with municipal, state, and/or federal officials related to matters of that of our public schools are strictly prohibited without the express authorization of the superintendent. And so this again puts the messaging in the hands of the superintendent that prevents this sort of confusion or this sort of scenario we see ourselves in now, regardless of the confusion from happening hopefully in the future.
Thank you. Any questions related to the policy? Again, this is our first opportunity to sort of reduce to writing what's been discussed in the past about, again, our overall effort to try to keep our communications organized and most importantly, effectively. I think everyone involved in the school administration and on the school committee has a responsibility to communicate about and advocate for the schools, but it's, it is equally important that we do so in an organized manner that does not result in the, the chaos that would ensue if everyone had access to, you know, the, the, heading, heading into the city council to talk about their individual priorities, which again, I, I think is related to what occurred here. I don't think anyone, including the, the principal who spoke before the municipal council, had anything other than the intention of trying to do what is right for students. But from an organizational standpoint, we have a responsibility to try to prioritize appropriately and communicate effectively. Mr. Withers?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, I think that, you know, in this scenario, I think, in this situation, I should say, I think it's clear that, that Mr. Rooney had, you know, what he proposed was, was, would be a benefit to the high school. And I don't think anybody doubts that. But the, you know, the reason that we, you know, we want to get that in the central administration is that, you know, while the high school is the flagship, there are a lot of other schools and there are a lot of other priorities. And you could see a situation where, if we didn't streamline this, where, you know, other administrators could go to municipal employees and say, you know, Willett really needs air conditioning, you know, Willett does need air conditioning. But we shouldn't have the, you know, the principle of Willett advocating that, even though they would be doing so in the best interest of the students.
Probably write a letter right now.
Even though it would be in the best interest of, even though they would be doing it in the best interest of their students, it's not in the best interest of our district.
Right. Mr. Larson, then Mr. Storrs.
I mean, I think over the last few days, I mean, it's pretty obviously there was a breakdown, you know, in a couple of different places. And I, I've been wrestling with it in different conversations with both members of this committee and fielding questions from our, our colleagues up at the city council as to, you know, what was going on. And I think what we have to remember is, in all of this, you know, we're all trying to advocate for the schools, end of sentence, period. And we need to do that together. You know, one of the communications I had over the weekend was, how come you guys weren't there? You guys are always there. Because, you know, it's, whether it's the superintendent, assistant superintendent, Mr. Fratato, you know, some of you guys, the chairman, you know, Mr. Rooney was there by himself. And, you know, it's, it's kind of embarrassing to be, you know, the only defense you've got is, you know, if I had known, I would have been there. You know, that, so that was kind of tough. You have to take it at face value, we all want to help. And I mean, I know you've seen me up at city council meetings, and sometimes I talk, most of the time I sit in the back room, but sitting in the background, everybody at that table knows that, you know, whoever's in the audience is supporting whatever's going on at the podium. And we want to do that. We want to support the folk, the people at the podium. And, but you gotta, you gotta let us know you're gonna be there. And we all have to be on the same page with, with what's gonna get said. And, I mean, I've gone full circle on this whole thing. I mean, I, when I first heard about it, said, you know, not the way we run things, you know. We have procedures for reasons, and, you know, I'm still quite honestly wrestling with it even as it is presented, but, you know, we have issues and we need to resolve them. And if we can get them resolved with these class size issues, then we're gonna do it. But, you know, I guess my, my message is, let's not do this again and let us help. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Mr. Storrs?
Two different points. One is regarding the expansion of the specific program. I, I know that's something that the curriculum subcommittee had presented to us back in 2014, and I believe everybody there felt that this was a, you know, a very positive program that we could be looking to add. It was definitely one of the, I believe, the two or three different programs that, that we were contemplating and held a discussion, a very positive discussion about how we can improve our CTE program, which is a very important part of our high school curriculum. And it seems very obvious to me in this situation with, with the way things happen, that everybody, from the mayor on down, the intent was obviously, you know, a very positive thing. Nobody meant any ill here. This was all being done for very positive reasons, absolutely communication should have been done differently. The school committee needs to be informed. And, and that's also, when it comes to programs of this nature, part of the discussion has to be the financial implications, the reoccurring costs every year, because, you know, that's, that's our job also. It's, yes, we have to take the input, especially, you know, from our curriculum experts about the curriculum needs of the, of the system, but we have to ensure that the budgetary process is going to be able to support that next year and the year after and so on. It's the same thing when we have grants, you know, by law, those have to come before us as well, so that we can ensure that what we're able to do this year, we're able to do in following years as well. I do wish that we could have had that discussion prior to being where we are now. But at the same time, I, I do want to say that it's, it's obvious that this issue has led to, or may possibly lead to some very positive outcomes for us, and for that, I'm hopefully thankful if that's the way it ends up.
Thank you. Ms. Singer, then Mr. Withers?
I just wanted to, you know, you had mentioned that, as Chairman Murphy mentioned, we have made progress in this school district over the last 18 months, doing things a different way. And building relationships with the city council, the community, our administration. And I think, you know, an organization's success comes from truthfulness and transparency. And I feel that that did not happen in this situation. And unfortunately, when you have a breakdown like that in communication that we had, the perception is things are not done truthfully and transparently. And I would hope that moving forward, that that does not occur again, because it does break away and eat away at the fabric of what we are trying to do here as a school committee and as a school district. So, I'll just move with that.
I agree. Yeah, I think Ms. Singer's point is well taken, and I, I would say to the administration, I think this is an appropriate time to say that, I think that the school committee is trying to look at this in the most constructive way possible and to focus on how we as an organization, as a school district, move forward. I hope that no administrator, central office or building administrator, takes this conversation lightly, because I promise, if this happens again, the conversation will not be nearly as positive for anyone. Mr. Withers?
I will withdraw my comment at this point because there was a few points back and moved in a different direction.
Okay.
Maybe I'll come back to it.
Yeah, well, we'll see what Ms. Singer's got. Ms. Zito?
I think when we all communicate one with the other, things work out a lot better. Once the communication gets filed up, this is the end result, which we need to avoid, because then you have friction between the various groups in the government, which we don't need.
No, we do not. I agree.
We have shortage of finances, so we don't need any other complications.
I agree. We got enough on our plate.
Right.
Thank you, Ms. Zito. Mr. Withers?
I'll go back to my comment. So, I'm gonna bring it back to the policy that, you know, I think we were-
That's what we're talking about.
That's what we're talking about. I think we've kind of moved a little bit onto, a little bit about the actual service as well, but I think they're all interrelated, so that's fine. But in regards to the, the policy and something Mr. Larson said about, you know, kind of being caught off guard and no one being there. And Ms. Singer talking about the communication breakdown, that brings me back to, you know, why I think this policy is so important, because, you know, if, if we had everything funneled through the superintendent as it should be, you know, our superintendent Sheehan would know, you know, okay, we gotta make sure someone's there from the, from the school commi-, from the school committee, or from the school department. And if he didn't, you know, we would be able to easily hold him accountable because we, you know, the policy should be followed, whereas where Mr. Rooney was the representative for the school district, he, you know, I wouldn't expect him or nor, as a principal of the high school, want him to be thinking, you know, well, I gotta make sure the school committee is there because that's not in his job purview.
Right.
So, that's just another reason why I think this policy, you know, could be beneficial as it kind of refocuses everyone towards what their, what their jobs are and not, you know, not having to worry about, you know, something that shouldn't concern them and would take away from time, you know, bettering the students' experiences.
Sure. No, good point. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? So one issue we do have is that, as this meeting was a special meeting that was scheduled somewhere at the last minute, we are not scheduled to meet again until, well, we're meeting, actually, we're meeting again next week, but then we will not meet again until September 14th. By policy, we generally, once something is introduced in this format, we would table the policy for two weeks. We do have the option of suspending the rules by two-thirds vote, which would allow us to implement the policy effective immediately. Frankly, I, given the thorough discussion that's been had tonight and discussions that took place at the policy subcommittee level, I don't, I personally don't see an upside in waiting to implement this for two weeks, which will actually turn into a month because based on what our schedule is. I don't know that I'm gonna convene the school committee just, just to approve this policy. So I, I would, but I'm giving you an out. If anyone wants to, you know, test me. But I, I thought perhaps I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules in order to provide for the immediate implementation of the proposed governmental communications policy. Second? I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Ms. Zito?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy, yes? Ms. Scales?
Yes.
Mr. Withers?
Yes.
Ms. Storrs?
Yes.
Thank you. So the rule's now suspended, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed governmental communications policy, which we will put a code on and put into our community relations section of the policy book.
So move.
Second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, so, motion passes, so I will provide that to the superintendent's office, so to make sure that that is added to our policy manual. And at this time, I would ask Mr. Rooney and Ms. Edmonds if you could join the school committee. Mr. Fratato, Ms. Daniels, thank you very much, so we can get on to the discussion of the oft spoken about Legal and Protective Services program, which we've heard good things about. And I know that our building administrators would like to share some information with the school committee. Again, this is a program that, Ms. Storrs, obviously feel free to chime in as well, but my understanding is that Chapter 74 certification was conferred upon this program earlier this summer. This has, this is, that's an important designation, both in terms of how it is viewed by the state and its importance to students, but also from an operational standpoint, there's a Chapter 74 reimbursement potential, which always factors into these conversations whenever we discuss the career and technical education program. So, Ms. Storrs, perhaps if you want to start with your satisfactory remarks as the chief academic officer of the district.
Thank you. As we've already discussed, this program is one that we had targeted some time ago for various reasons that have been brought up tonight. We do think that these, this program prepares students for careers that are, you know, good careers, meaningful careers, ones that there are opportunities for in our community and surrounding communities. We also think that we have a lot of programs already in our building which are well suited to supporting this, so it's not as hard of a program to, to bring into existence as some others. So, we've been taking steps towards being prepared for the implementation of this program so that when we have the opportunity, we can jump right into it in a way that is not always the case. So, it, it shouldn't be particularly difficult to make that move, because as I say, there are a lot of things going on. But I'll let Ms. Edmonds perhaps describe in greater detail what I mean.
Thank you. And I'm really happy to be here tonight to talk about CTE. It's a very important part of my life. Legal and Protective Services is one of the clusters. It's Criminal Justice is actually the name of the course, but the, our three-year program, but Legal and Protective Services is the cluster. About four years ago, in my general advisory committee meetings that we have twice a year, my advisors suggested that I look into developing new programs. And what we looked at was dental assisting and Legal and Protective Services, or Criminal Justice. Mr. Sheehan and I visited Tri County about two and a half, three years ago. We spoke with the director of vocational education there, as well as the principal and superintendent. They had a very robust program going on at Tri County. I've also gone to visit the one at South Shore, I'm sorry, Southeastern Vocational and Technical Education High School, which has been in existence for about seven years at Southeastern. And in May, I took a group of people from the high school with me to visit the one at Quincy High School. It is one of the programs that the U.S. Department of Labor has very, very positive outlooks for employment, because it is so diverse. Criminal Justice encompasses the legal system, law enforcement, courts, cybersecurity. Students have the opportunity to embark on a career path that could lead them anywhere from law school to working as a guard in a prison, to going to work for the DEA, Homeland Security, or working for an electronic surveillance company. It is extremely diverse as far as a career path. In January, we surveyed all of the high schools at this, all of the students at the high school in an advisory. And one of the questions was, if this program was offered, or if these programs were offered, would you have enrolled in one? And we did freshmen through seniors, because we really wanted to get a good idea of what the kids were looking for. And we listed all kinds of Chapter 74 programs, not just, you know, the ones that we had, not just the couple that we were thinking about bringing onboard. More than 400 students responded favorably to Criminal Justice. If we had a Criminal Justice program, more than 400 kids said they would consider enrolling in that. So that's a significantly high number of students at the high school. And so that's why we did have it in the budget that we were proposing back in February. And we still feel that it's a very attractive program. And as Mr. Sawyer mentioned, we, through the social studies department, there are law courses, and through the science department, there are forensic courses, and that's something, both of those are elements of the curriculum of Criminal Justice.
Mr. Rooney?
If it's possible at the end, I'd have something else that I'd like to add, but not to derail the momentum of what we're on here. to the high school, but then also long-term programmatic changes that could potentially impact space, one of the things that the task force was also very intrigued by was the possibility of Legal and Protective Services, as Mrs. Edmond said, the cluster, and also Criminal Justice as the actual course. We've had some discussions about restructuring some of our CTE programs for them to be able to work together. Robotics and computer information systems could partner with Criminal Justice so that various aspects of Homeland Security and electronic surveillance could be studied in terms of how you write code for those types of things. So it is something that we feel many of our students would certainly want to take advantage of. I do want to clear up one thing that did come on the heels of my presentation is this is not strictly a preparation program for police and fire. There are a lot of, as Mrs. Edmond astutely said, a lot of other opportunities for students who come through Criminal Justice to be able to explore.
So I guess that sort of leads to one question I have, and if, certainly if there are any other questions, I'm eager for them to be posed, but is it the case, just from a sort of a nuts and bolts perspective, because it sounds like one of the benefits of this program is that there's such a diverse array of opportunities that students can pursue, students who have come through the program? Is, is it such that the curriculum is set up that the students who enroll are taking sort of one set of, there's one sort of set curriculum throughout their three years in the program? Or is there sort of subdivisions of the program where depending on whether or not you're more interested in being a cybersecurity expert as opposed to a criminal attorney? Is there sort of that type of diversity of opportunity, or is it more a one-size-fits-all and you sort of have a well-rounded approach when you come out?
Just like any of our other programs and like any other discipline, the Department of Education sets forth frameworks that we have to follow. And there are probably, I don't know, several hundred competencies within strand two for Criminal Justice. And you're, you're right in saying that some of them focus primarily on cybersecurity, some of them focus on law, some of them focus on forensics. But the students are required to reach a level of proficiency in as many of those competencies as possible. So it is true that it would be more of a survey course. Now, depending upon who the teacher was and what their background was, perhaps if they were an attorney at Southeastern, one of the faculty members is a retired attorney. So you may have...
Well, just be an attorney to go second. I mean, there's a lot of them too, but that's a different story.
Well, so if he were the only person teaching in the program, if it were a singleton, as it will be at Attleboro High School, you could see that he may come in a little bit heavier with law because he's comfortable with it. If it's somebody who has a background in electronic surveillance, there might be a little bit more emphasis on electronic surveillance. But they do have to cover the wide array. And again, it's a exposure to a career path, not necessarily the ending.
Yeah, sure.
So it would be exposing students to go on to New England Tech or somewhere, perhaps for, you know, electronic surveillance, or go on to post-secondary for any one of those other components.
Could you envision a situation in which we employed multiple Criminal Justice, Legal and Protective Services instructors such that we essentially had different sections that could be offered to provide for that different emphasis? Or would we run into a situation there where we would tip our hat that we were, our hand that we were not covering the well-rounded?
I think if we were to have, I think if we were to have that model that you're talking about, we would have a hard time being approved as a Chapter seventy-four program.
That's kind of what I, that's kind of what I thought, but...
Yeah. It has to be a more well-rounded curriculum.
But to that point, for instance, in plumbing, to, to complete that teacher's schedule, he teaches a course outside of CTE called Basic Home Maintenance.
Okay.
So if we were fortunate enough to get to the point where we had two instructors in the Criminal Justice program, one of them may be able to offer an elective that was more geared towards public safety, another one might be geared more towards, you know, the law. So...
So we could, we could have like a Law and Order episode, where the first half hour are the cops, the second half hour are the terrorists.
What they do in the regional school is at Southeastern, the part-time retired attorney. There's a man who came from electronic surveillance, this is background. And then there's the third person who was, those two are full-time. Her background is law enforcement. So the kids have an opportunity to spend time with each one of those teachers during the course of a semester, during a semester. So that the law piece and the constitutional piece is handled by one person, the cybersecurity, forensics, computer forensics, that's handled by another person, and then law enforcement and criminal justice system is handled by another person.
Thank you. I think Mr. Withers first, then Ms. Storrs.
Yeah, could you, or could someone explain, I guess, the, the initial cost of the program, and where that number came from, and then what the cost of, ongoing cost to maintain the program over, you know, several years going forward would be?
Well, we initially asked, I think, for a .5 teacher. And as Mr. Rooney explained, that teacher would be delivering instruction during the exploratory, the freshmen go through, the eight or nine-day experience that the freshmen go through. And then to round out their schedule, they would be teaching elective the first year as well, the first trimester rather, as well as beginning to write the curriculum. Because in order to get Chapter seventy-four approval, we do need to have three years of curriculum written, if not necessarily having been delivered, as we had with plumbing. Because in the second year of plumbing, we were able to get Chapter seventy-four approval. It would be the expense of some technology for the program as, in addition to the teacher. It's the technology that would be needed among the things that we're looking at would be, there, and I don't know what the name of it is, there's a module that you can buy that allows the students to be trained as nine-one-one operators, and they can actually become dispatchers by getting the certification. So there's certain amounts, certain pieces of equipment that would be very beneficial for us to have in the program, as well as all the instructional materials that we need, textbooks. There is some forensics that we would need to be doing, so even though we offer a forensics class, we would have to duplicate some of the lab material that we have because forensics is an extremely popular science elective. And so we wouldn't be able to throw them out of their lab so that we could take it over for our forensics classes. So we would have to duplicate some of the things that they would have upstairs in the lab.
So would there be in year two then, is that when those items would be being purchased? Would that mean there'd be a significant increase in the cost, do you know? Or is that built into what was discussed with the municipal government?
Actually, in year two, other than replenishing some of the supplies, like if you, if you purchase a blood spatter kit, then all you have to do is just replenish fake blood. Then you're looking at a .8 salary. But in our projections, in terms of some Perkins grant funding that is associated with Chapter seventy-four, that would not be allocated to plumbing any longer, in year two, we would be able to offset approximately half of the .8 teacher's salary. So we projected year one costing approximately $50,000. In year two, that cost would come down to between $30,000 and $35,000.
And the Perkins funding is for startup of new programs. So the state would look very favorably on us using that portion that we're using now for plumbing, for the portion of his salary, to be then diverted to the Criminal Justice salary. And as far as buying equipment or materials that we would need, we could build that into our Perkins grant. And that would be seen by the state as something that they endorse us using that kind of money for. And we are always looking for grants that we can write to purchase more equipment or materials.
How long is the Perkins grant, how long are the Perkins grant funds available to a new position, like this one or a new program?
Three years.
Three years. Ms. Storrs?
Two, two question areas, actually. The first is for scheduling. Is this being seen as a sophomore through senior? How many trimesters and is it one block?
Right now, it's one block. It would only be exploratory for the first year.
Right.
And then as the year went on, we would be offering that elective that we talked about, and that's open to students in offer years. When you are a chapter, before you're a Chapter seventy-four program, you can open it, as we did with plumbing, you can open it to students of all grades. We don't have to have what the state terms as completer levers, making sure that the students, not as sophomores, continue through junior and senior year. That's, that's the anticipated progression for a Chapter seventy-four program. So as we're growing the program, we're able to offer it to students of all grades.
Is it elective or...
As an elective or even if a student, say, in their junior year, before we're Chapter seventy-four certified or approved, if, if a junior wanted to take it, they could take Level one and Level two and then graduate. They would not be considered a completer lever, but it isn't critical for us at that point because we're not Chapter seventy-four. It's only when we get to be Chapter seventy-four that we really need to make sure that the sequence is being followed.
And that's the second part of my question. How long do you foresee before we would submit for, and how long is the approval process for Chapter seventy-four? And I know that there's a financial reimbursement regarding Chapter seventy-four programs. Can you talk to that as well?
Sure. It's kind of difficult to project how long it would take. If you remember plumbing, we were able to get that done in two years. And that was really through a lot of hard work that we were able to get that pushed through. Engineering, it took us about five years because we had one engineering teacher and then that, that teacher left, and then we hired another person, and we had to grow the program over again, and we had to develop the three-year curriculum. I would say, on average, it's a three-year to maybe four-year turnaround before, from the time we start the program until we receive our Chapter seventy-four certification. Once we are certified, are approved as Chapter seventy-four, as will happen this October with plumbing, all of the students who are enrolled in plumbing, whether they're Levels one, two, or three, sophomore, junior, senior, will be coded in SIMS as Chapter seventy-four students. The reimbursement, the additional reimbursement that the district will receive for those Chapter seventy-four students will come in FY seventeen, next July, FY seventeen.
Do we have an estimate about how much that additional reimbursement is per student?
It ranges between $4,000 and $5,500 per student.
Per student? That's correct.
Over the gen ed student allocation.
I just think it's always important to point out that, because sometimes I never want the community to get the impression that we prioritize Chapter seventy-four programs because, you know, as a money grab. I mean, the reality is, the state has incentivized the development of Chapter seventy-four programs because of the sustainable career paths that they can lead to. And I think that that is a tremendous advantage as a district that we have, having a comprehensive high school, because it allows us the capacity to develop these types of programs and then, most importantly, offer the opportunities that we do to students, and then reap the benefits that the state offers through that reimbursement because we are prioritizing students. So I really do think it's an instance in which the Commonwealth has correctly prioritized something, and as a community, we are in a position to capitalize on.
Ms. Skills?
Yep. First, I was going to say that I appreciate the municipal body questioning the way that this was presented to them, but more importantly, the, the importance of the program. Can you kind of speak to how maybe the collaboration with the municipal government is, how it may address some of our strategic planning goals?
Well, from the standpoint of providing relevant, challenging, and engaging instruction, this is going to, this is going to really intrigue a lot of our students, whether they be prospective firefighters, police officers, cybersecurity agents. So in terms of, you know, the mission and the vision of the district, it certainly will tie in with those. We would envision experts from the city, whether they be, you know, whether they be higher-ranking officials within the police department, the fire department, coming in and serving as guest speakers, assisting us, you know, on the CTE advisory as far as assessing the curriculum as we go. And, you know, so in terms of, you know, the district, the high school in particular in this case, you know, being, being at the center of the, of the community where stakeholders are supporting the educational experience, we see that there's a lot of possibility for that.
As well as with the district court. We would want to establish a relationship with the courthouse as well.
Thank you. Ms. Larson?
I think, you know, given the opportunity to expand the CTE program, I think it's fabulous. I mean, I've seen two students firsthand. I think that was their favorite part of the day for three years of their lives. So to be able to offer these choices, if there were a way to get every one of the students in the high school involved in some CTE program, I think that would be fabulous. So I think what we're on the edge of here right now is going to be really exciting. And again, I think it, it makes Attleboro just, just that much more of a special place because of the different options that are available to the students going through the high school versus neighboring towns and private institutions that are nearby. They just don't have this, and I don't know why you wouldn't take advantage of this opportunity. So I think it's, I think it's a great thing, and I think you guys have a great program.
Thank you. One of the exciting things also is that we would be one of a handful of schools offering Criminal Justice. I think there's only seven right now in the state. So, you know, for our case, it really would be an advantage.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Storrs?
How do, what do you foresee the exploratory curriculum entailing? I know it's only about a few weeks' worth of...
It's about eight days of instruction. It's, well, cyber safety is one of, first of all, there's a general safety, a day on general safety. There's a day on career exploration. So they would have an opportunity to explore careers that they can embark on based on this instruction. Then there's a day of cyber safety. There's a day that addresses the Constitution. There's, and again, you don't do the Constitution in 65 minutes, so... Oh, thank you. I have a cheat sheet here. Career opportunities, the role of first responders, Fourth Amendment search and seizure, proper use of force, computer forensics, drinking and distracted driving, impact of 9/11 on law enforcement and first responders. And again, that's more than a day's worth. And then CPR and first aid to our first responders.
Thank you.
Did, perhaps a question of mine that I had at the beginning, it slipped my mind. And you may have said this, so if you have, I apologize, but how long has this been a Chapter seventy-four program from the state?
This is one of those confusing things.
Okay.
The curriculum has been approved as a Chapter seventy-four curriculum for approximately 70 years, six or seven years. It was only approved as a Chapter seventy-four program this year. Because in order to be a Chapter seventy-four program, so schools that have been running it all these years have been doing it without the additional reimbursement.
Right. That, that was my question. I knew about the certification.
It's only a Chapter seventy-four program when you have a Chapter seventy-four certified teacher teaching an approved Chapter seventy-four curriculum.
Right.
The state didn't approve the teacher test until May.
Okay.
And so since May, a number of people have taken the written exam, and now they'll be taking the performance exam. And I believe that the teachers at Southeastern and at Quincy and at the few schools that are currently, have been teaching it for a while, have been offering it for a while. I believe they're being grandfathered in.
Sure.
So there is, it is now just within the last four, three months, approved as a total package. Now, they have the Chapter seventy-four curriculum, and they have the Chapter seventy-four exam.
Okay. I'm curious about that because I think it's interesting, and when you mentioned the, the piece of the curriculum that relates to 9/11 and the change, the impact that that had on law enforcement continues to have. You know, I do think this really is an example of seeing in sort of real time how curriculum needs change as societal realities change. And certainly, in the past 14 years, there has been a shift in not only geopolitical dynamics, but in how, as a country, we view law enforcement in terms of their responsibilities and the overall sort of security and defense industries. And I would say that over the course of the past year, the dialogue and the discourse related to these issues has evolved significantly. And I think that it will be interesting to see how some of these issues... these issues that are still sort of coming into formation to some degree, how those will be incorporated into some of the instructional practices that you see in this school district and districts across the country. I just think it's a, you know, it's a, certainly, there are, you know, things are changing in science all the time. We certainly, we talk about that a lot. We talk about the technology changes. But this is, this speaks to how we as a society function. And I think it's just, it's interesting to think about how that might, the impact that that might have, but-
What's also surprising to us, or was to me, is that this class of incoming freshmen, some of them weren't born when 9/11 happened. So for them, it's history.
It's not a change, not a change for them, just the world.
No, this is the life that they've always known.
Right. Mr. Larson.
That was exactly the point I was going to make. I mean, I, some of the kids coming in freshman year in high school don't know a life other than, you know, post-9/11. I mean, they don't know pre-9/11.
Well, that's their loss, because-
It was a lot better.
It was a good time. Mrs. Skels, then Mrs. Storrs.
I just, when going through a lot of the material, I realized that when you first presented to us in the curriculum, Subcommittee was back in September of last year. And at that time, we asked that you put together a three-year plan for the expansion of the CTE program. I would like to see that happen this year. I'd like to see that, what that report looks like.
And I, there will be an opportunity in the fall. I think one of the things, one of the discussions we've had about some of the spotlight meetings for the fall is the idea of doing something focused exclusively on career and technical education, perhaps in a different venue than this, perhaps one with food, and-
Provided by CTE.
CTE, there you go. But I think that will be a good opportunity for the administration to really articulate how CTE programs will be prioritized, and what is the vision for those programs, and the trajectory for them in the long run. So, and that's an important conversation for us to, for us to return to. Mrs. Storrs.
You mentioned how few of these programs are out in the Commonwealth, but are there any current Attleboro students that we are losing to a program of this nature, or is this just something we are?
You have, yes. There are several going to Tri-County. I don't know the number exactly. I want to say seven, but I'm not absolutely sure that it was seven.
I guess I believe that talks to, you know, further talks to the need for a program.
And again, while we're developing the program, we cannot bring those students back from Tri-County. But as soon as we have Chapter 74 certification, we can deny them admission.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Rooney.
I would just like to express my appreciation to the superintendent for his apology, but the bottom line is, we wouldn't be here tonight having these discussions had I closed the gap of communication between myself and the superintendent. So you have my sincere apologies. I also apologize to the municipal council. You know, the bottom line is, I was out of District Friday and Saturday in terms of moving my daughter to college. But at any point on Sunday, Monday, or even Tuesday morning, I could have closed that communication gap and eased a lot of frustration. So for that, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Appreciate it. Okay, so we will, we will not entertain a vote on this issue right now because, as we said, the school committee does not get into the micromanagement of selection of specific academic programs. And while we certainly were prepared in light of the breakdown in process to put the brakes on the implementation of this program, it's, it's clear from, that this program does enjoy broad support. But it's also clear that going forward, the district needs to take into account, in terms of our communication, and in terms of our implementation, and in terms of our spending priorities, all of our priorities and all of our district's needs across the district, pre-K through 12+, all nine buildings and all the other programs that are housed elsewhere in the city. So in light of that, we will be communicating the request to the mayor, and I certainly prepared to answer any questions the municipal council has as to the importance of that appropriation, to make sure that we do chip away, and it's only chipping away because we can't solve our class size issues. And certainly, we'll monitor the, the benefits that we yield, that will be yielded both from that investment and from the, the implementation of legal and protective services. So I would encourage the administration to proceed, but to do so cautiously, because, you know, there's a certain element of trust that the committee is sort of basing our, both our actions and inactions on tonight. Mr. Withers and Mrs. Storrs. Yeah, I'm sorry, I just did, Mr. Storrs and Mr. Withers. I'm just looking from where I, you know, I apologize. Mr. Storrs, then Mr. Withers. That was not, I apologize.
Knowing that there's been an approved budget allocation, I guess you would call it, for this program down to us, and the budget's already previously been approved for this fiscal year, do we need to, or should we vote to allocate those funds, at least to a certain line, line level in the current budget?
Yeah, I think at some point, when the appropriation is received, we may address that in terms of the mechanics of it. At the moment, we, you know, that funding hasn't even come in yet, but we will make sure that it's, that it's tucked away in the right place and go into the right thing. Mr. Withers.
By, by taking no action, where does that leave us with the appropriation that the municipal county, council voted on?
In terms of the $50,000?
Yeah.
So I don't know that that appropriation has actually been signed by the mayor. I don't know that it's been received by the school department. Do we have any, no reason to think that it has? So, you know, eventually, that, that funding will come in. And again, that, you know, there's, there's, there is an element of trust with regard to this in terms of the conversations that this committee has had with municipal officials and, in terms of the discussion that took place here tonight. And it's our hope that we're able to go forward with the classroom teachers that we need and the CTE program that we want.
So are we committing ourselves to that $50,000?
What, what I would say with regard to that is that statutorily, as voiced by our council tonight, the municipal government is not authorized to put that type of restriction on the educational funding. That being said, all of us saw the discussion. We understand the intent of the municipal government with regard to that appropriation. And just like we are operating based on a certain level of trust in people doing what they have committed to doing, I think that we have to sort of reciprocate that to some degree and say that we understand the intent. And based on the additional conversations that took place, I don't think we are in opposition to it. If we have to reconvene to reconsider that, then the school committee reserves the right to do that. But certainly, it's not something I envisioned, and it's certainly not something that I'm hoping for. Is that a fair response?
Yep.
Again, and I, I think it's an important question. I appreciate the members who brought it up because this is a trust issue, plain and simple. And I think that oftentimes, when you're grappling with difficult situations, and given our financial circumstances, we are definitely in difficult, we're in a difficult situation. Sometimes, you know, you, trust is all you have. So we'd like to have a lot of money in addition to the trust. Unfortunately, we just have trust. Any other final questions or comments? I want to thank the members of the administration, Mr. Rooney, Ms. Edmonds, Mr. Sheehan, I'm sorry, Mr. Fratato, Mr. Angeles. I want to thank the members of the committee for the thoughtful discussion that took place tonight. I think we all recognize that circumstances are not ideal, but I think it's also important that we keep our focus on the best interests of our current future students. Frankly, I think that's what took place here tonight. So thank you again, and we will see you back here next week at our regularly scheduled meeting on August 31st, which will be the night before school starts, I should say, on Wednesday evening in this room, the Francisco Cito Conference Room, at 6:30 PM, August 26th, will be the trans, our final transportation open house. So representatives from Bloom will be here, representatives from the Attleboro Public Schools will be here. If you have questions, if you have comments, we particularly encourage you to write your comments to Mr. Fratato. But questions about anything from bus routes to bus safety to the logistics of our transportation system, that will be the opportunity to do that. And Convocation will convene at 8:00 AM that morning, Wednesday, August 26th. Our faculty and staff will convene to start the process of beginning the 2015, 2016 academic year. And that's, that's, that's the week ahead. So- Motion to adjourn. Hold in favor.